30% of those are mental health related. So half of the business that our 911 call center gets is mental health related. Not all of them get brought to the ER, not all of them get arrested or taken to jail, but still, that's a huge amount of business that our 911 call center is doing right now. And so the answer that works in most communities out there is having somebody at the call center that triages these calls and making decision as to whether they need to send a policeman, policewoman only, or a police officer and a clinician. That clinician can be a nurse practitioner, a social worker, a nurse, or even what's called a peer specialist, someone who's been there, done that, got the T-shirt kind of thing. And to go out and take care of these folks, that helps decrease patients coming into the ER. It helps decrease that huge amount of burden that our emergency room sees on a daily basis. So this is really important, and the reason Laura is standing here is because underneath all that, at the very top of that pyramid, is something called childhood trauma. Every day, the vast majority of these patients that walk into my emergency room are victims of abuse, or neglect, or childhood trauma. That, you know, that sounds bad, right? What you don't really understand is that it's really driving the bus. These folks are very sick, and so I would encourage you, I don't have time to show it now, but this is a TED Talk. Just Google Stan Sonu and the Science of Adversity. This TED Talk is essentially a presentation that, from a 30,000-foot perspective, tells us that we're practicing medicine wrong, that we're not doing it right. And again, the way I talk about it is a Band-Aid and an arterial bleed. Waiting for them to come into the emergency room suicidal is not the way to take care of these patients, okay? That's the problem. And so this is just the first step, this coalition, and that's all I have. Have you got anything to say?
I just want to say there are many people in this room today who are a part of this work. Councilwoman Fuller, Councilman Nicholson, Councilwoman Taylor, Mayor Perkins, CAO Whitehorn, and countless other individuals in the audience behind me. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd love to have them at least stand up and be recognized if they're here today.
I'll make them stand up. Adam, Amy.
Yes. Chief Smith was a very important part of this work.
Everybody else in the coalition, members of the coalition.
Me too.
Thank you all.
Yes, these folks stayed on a Zoom call for two straight days to come up with an action plan to improve our current system. And as Dr. Patterson mentioned, the way things work now is costing our community way too much, and these are preventable costs, not to mention the cost per patient, but also the cost of safety to our law enforcement officers, because when you take someone to a place where they don't want to go in handcuffs, their fear response is going to be triggered, and not everyone is able to manage that in a safe and appropriate way. And I know our law enforcement officers would agree that they need an alternative for diverting those cases.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say how appreciative I am of the mayor's leadership on this issue and of my colleagues have supported this effort. The first time I really came to understand what a profound problem this is in our community is when I was appointed about a decade ago to represent a very disabled young man accused of a serious crime. I ultimately learned that he had the mental acuity of about a six-year-old. Despite his disability, he had been passed again and again to the criminal justice system and was, when I was appointed, awaiting trial on a charge that he didn't understand. He didn't understand where he was when he's at the jail. So this is an opportunity both to save taxpayers money for the reasons that you've described this afternoon, and to deal with mentally ill people with the compassion and the care that they deserve as members of our community. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your lifetime of work, Dr. Patterson, in this field, and thanks to all the stakeholders who are supporting this very important effort. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And the resolution, is it like a point in the agenda?
It's number 122.
Does any other council member have any award of recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Seeing as none. Mr. Mayor, do you have any award of recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Mr. Chairman. We hosted a press conference before city council meeting, and we talked about ordinance 122, as Councilwoman Fuller just brought up, and the $5.6 million that will be awarded. So we have some very important people and some very important entities that are in the audience. Can we get representatives from Griggs Enterprises, the Ronald McDonald House, the YMCA, I think I'm missing Cabosa, to stand, please? Am I missing anybody from the press? I'm sorry, I might be. Where's Ms. Regal? Shelley Regal, is Shelley in the audience?
I speak.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that Pastor Dennis Everett is in the audience.
Yes.
I didn't see him.
Yep, Pastor Everett, you mind standing up? You're in this as well, that's why I was calling Shelley first, actually.
Pastor, I didn't see you back there. I would have had you to pray for us.
He can still pray for us. He don't need a formal invite. I always ask him to pray for me. Well, these entities will be some of the recipients of the $5.6 million that we're giving out, but those dollars that we're giving out are partnered with a lot of other public and private entities in our city, but the Ronald McDonald House is providing amazing services to families who have sick children that can't afford housing and things of that nature when those unexpected tragedies arise. So thank you so much for choosing Shreveport and coming here and partnering with us. We have the YMCA that's doing phenomenal with youth sports. They're expanding their baseball and softball capacity, putting in turf fields to where they're expected in year one to get a $5 million impact on our economy in just year one, and we're giving them $1.5 million, so I think that's a pretty good return on investment. So thank you YMCA and to Cabosa, the largest youth organization in the city, I found out from Scott Hughes during our press conference. I knew we had a lot of kids, but they are doing phenomenal things in the city, and we're investing in Cargill Field to put turf soccer fields out there so our young people can play sports all year round. So I just wanted to, no, I'm sorry, and we have Pastor Dennis Everett, who the city's working with to get an indoor swimming facility in Allendale neighborhood. So I just want to thank each and every organization that's here for all that you do in the community, and we really look forward to these projects coming to fruition. Thank you so much. You can get them around to the corner. Next, Mr. Chairman, I want to talk about the weekend in football that we had here in Shreveport. We hosted Grambling State University and Northwestern for the Shreveport Classic, and I want to thank, a big thank you to Spar and the Shreveport Police and Fire Departments for this very, very safe and successful event. Thank you so much for all that you did. We also appreciate all the fans for coming out and supporting those two schools. We had a great showing, it was a lot of fun, saw some great football, and wouldn't have been able to do it without you, so thank you so much for that. Next, I want to just highlight National Night Out is less than a month away. The deadline to register is September 23rd. We encourage neighborhood organizations to go to www.shreveportla.gov to sign up. National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, October 4th. It is not too late to sign up, and our goal is to get near 300 National Night Out parties in the city. I think last time I checked, we were around 200, so a little bit of short, but the good news is we're way beyond where we were last year, and that is a very good thing considering we're recovering from the year that, the pandemic year, which we skipped. So looking forward to having a great National Night Out here in the city of Shreveport, and we're also going to be competing with every other city in the country. Chief Smith is very ambitious and says he wants to finish number one, so we need your help to do that. We want Shreveport to be number one. Lastly, talking about National Night Out again, Shreveport Police Department is hosting a special event on Thursday at 6:00 PM. A going-away party and parade will take place in the 400 to 600 blocks of Texas Street in downtown Shreveport. Mr. Chairman, that concludes all my comments for today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communications relative to city business?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. You know, I'd like to say good evening to Pastor Everett. Thank you Pastor Everett for all the work that you're doing at the Lake Bethlehem Church and in the community, and may God bless, and also my lifelong friend, Scott Hughes. Scott, good to see you. Thank you, ma'am. At this particular time, does any member have any questions for property standards from Mr. Green? Did everyone receive your revenue collection plan implementation report? Thank you. Public here, and there's none. Madam Kirk, do we have any legislation to be added to the agenda today?
No.
Thank you. Today, we will have public comments on the agenda items only. You will have three minutes to speak, and the vice chair will handle the individuals and the time.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Today, I do speak on Resolution 9112 about Devin Duane Myers. I believe it's still a good positivity to recognize for Devin Duane Myers to be remembered, and of course, I know I didn't know him, but if I had, it would have been a great thing. I still believe in the fact that he did touch the lives of many other people in a lot of ways that many people, including myself, may not have known about, and I'm sure that that's really a good thing, too. Still, it would be nice to get this thing taken care of if it could be today. And of course, I know it's not, but I did want to say, MDA did get the $185 donation I mailed, and I got a thank you letter from them, and this had to be mentioned. And also, we need sensor cameras in the Highland area, because at every intersection, and I did say this before, that we need them, people are trying to run red lights, they're trying to cause wrecks, and we can't have this. Please help us.
Mr. Chairman.
And it's 34 years now that I've helped MDA.
That was going to be my question, Sammy, 34 years?
Like Ben Bailey says on Cash Cab, that is correct.
Well, thank you, and I'm sure MDA appreciates it. That's it.
David Frye.
I defer my comments to the president. My name is Steve Pinkley, and I'm a retired firefighter. Yesterday, y'all were talking about advantage plans, but like the gentleman from Willis Knighten, Mr. Felder spoke, advantage plans are a gamble, a rolling of the dice. You have good health, you want to save money, you take an advantage plan. Otherwise, you don't. Two examples I have of that, one of my sister-in-laws said, wow, they're giving me a gym membership, and they're giving me free vitamins. She came down with cancer. They would not give her home health, oxygen, did not give her the majority of her chemo treatments. She died. Second one said, wow, I can get my $142 back. Every one of her doctors dropped her. She could not find a doctor who would take her because she was on an advantage plan. She died. And it was basically because of lack of care that could have been given otherwise. Mr. Brown, you stated that retirees are a drain on this system. Thank the good Lord that I and my family are in relatively good health. That could change any day. And I gave you a raise. You may not understand how, but when I was working for the city, and until I reached Medicare age, you paid a higher percentage of my bills. When I received Medicare age, you only paid 20% of my bills. So that is a raise that you and a lot of the, that I and a lot of the other firefighters have given back. But you have failed to recognize that of any part, other than we're a drain to you. Last year, you were going to make it mandatory for us to take an advantage plan. Thank you so much for at least making it an option this year. The three-tier failed at the Health Board, but yet the mayor is still trying to put that forth, because it is shown on the TV, and it has been made and mentioned. How is that possible if it failed? Thank you for your time. I hope you consider it.
Virginia Pinkley? No, Ms. Virginia.
I'm married to Steve Pinkley, who is retiring for nearly 30 years. He's been retired for many years now, but I wasn't here yesterday because I was at the funeral of my nine-year-old great niece. She had AML leukemia that was diagnosed in February. She died Thursday. I thought on the way home of the people that are in treatment at this time for their healthcare needs, and that it would be catastrophic if Willis Knighten was their care system and that amount of money went up, or they had to change in the middle of treatment. Whether you're nine or 90, that is important. Mr. Green, I understand that you asked a question of what we were doing to build back the city.
No, ma'am, I didn't.
I'm thanking you for what you do, but I want to tell you what the firemen, my husband 50 years ago did. They started this fund and have put into it for 50 years. These men went into fires without protection. They started the first CPR, mouth-to-mouth. My husband would come home and be so glad that he saved somebody, but he would gargle with listerine for days, because it was mouth-to-mouth. You had no protection. They also voted in city bonds to build the fairground fields, to build the civic center. They volunteered at the first mud bug. It was held on the city hall, city courthouse steps. We were at the first revel. They shook the boot for 50 years, ruined her muscular dystrophy. They gathered money and toys for Salvation Army. That's what they did for 50 years for this city. They still contribute and still pay taxes, and they still help the city. Mr. Nicholson, you expressed that retirees could probably go on full Medicare. I bet that you know what advantage plans are now, but if you don't, before your family needs it, please check out what they offer. My husband was talking about my sisters. To the mayor and the council, Mr. Whitehorn, I have given you an email that was put out on one of the news channels. Gallagher sent out no RFP per administration. I looked for an RFP on the city website. I found one for janitorial services, 30 pages, asked lots of questions. Is healthcare not as important as janitorial services? I would like to also remind you that Willis Knighten, that's where on-the-job injuries go, they have for years, to their work here.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment really quickly?
Yes, sir.
Something that I missed, I should have known, I was going to have to reiterate this. A part of that press conference that we did prior to this council meeting, we provided the news media with the actual response, and this is clearing up misinformation. We provided the news media with the actual response from Aetna. We have that packet of information to the request for proposal from Gallagher. We just got it on yesterday, and we had the response from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So when people put that out in the community that they didn't have an opportunity, that's false. We actually have the response, where we cannot release it, but Aetna can release it. And Aetna was president at the Healthcare Trust Fund Board meeting, so we're asking them to be just as transparent as city government with this. Another bit of misinformation, no costs are going up for city employees. No costs are going up. We are giving our city employees the option to choose which healthcare system they want to attend. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clear that up, because a lot of that keeps getting out, and we're having to respond to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just follow on the mayor's comments and say, as I said yesterday, that what the Healthcare Trust Fund Board has approved is a Medicare Advantage option. It is not mandatory. No retiree of the city of Shreveport would be required to elect that plan. For some retirees, choosing a Medicare Advantage plan will make economic sense. For others, it will not. But I just, I'm sorry that retirees have received some misinformation from various sources. I understand how frightening it is to be told that you're not going to have access to your physicians that have treated you for many years, or that your costs are going to go up substantially, but I have reviewed what was filed with the Clerk of Council from the Healthcare Trust Fund Board, and again, the Medicare Advantage plan that we're talking about is an optional, not a mandatory, program that the city, assuming the council approves it, will offer in 2023. So I will say, as I said yesterday, that I hope that the professionals involved in this conversation, both in front of the microphone and behind the scenes, will discuss facts and will not sow confusion among people who are elderly and vulnerable and very concerned about some of the changes that have been discussed. Thank you.
And while she's coming down, I just want to remind everyone that while at the podium, we do not call out specific names of members up on the horseshoe or out in the audience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Jennifer Herbert, and I am legal counsel for Aetna. And I'm here today to correct some misinformation that the mayor has presented to you. On April 20th, 2022, approximately three hours before the Willis Knighten and Aetna scheduled short presentation to the Healthcare Trust Fund Board meetings take effect, Aetna provided an illustrative quote to Tammy Roland Tharp, the benefits consultant and area vice president for Gallagher Benefit Services for the city of Shreveport's health benefit plan. Aetna provided this document as a result of various email requests and inquiries from Ms. Roland Tharp. In fact, Ms. Roland Tharp confirmed in emails dated March 22nd, 2022, that no official RFP would be issued. During the April 20th meeting, Willis Knighten and Aetna gave a joint presentation. Slide 18 of that presentation is titled "Illustrative Commercial Proposal Highlights." Aetna never received a formal request for proposal from the city of Shreveport, Gallagher, or any representative. I'll say it again, no, Aetna was never provided an RFP, period. What Aetna did get was isolated email requests, which Aetna quickly put into a standard template document from its library three hours before the meeting. Mr. Whitehorn has produced a document from Aetna labeled as a proposal, but he did not produce a document from the city or Gallagher labeled as a request for proposal. No, he didn't, and that is because no such document exists. If it did exist, surely we'd have all seen it by now. Aetna very much wanted the opportunity to provide a competitive bid and repeatedly requested an RFP from the broker Gallagher. However, we were never provided an RFP and received only piecemeal information from the city's broker that was not provided in a timely manner in order for Aetna to provide a meaningful quote prior to the board's July 20th vote to retain Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana as their TPA end network for the January 1st, 2023 renewal. This was not a fair process, this was not a just process. Aetna was never given an opportunity to provide a comparison of its tiered network against that of Blue Cross. If we had, we are confident we could provide better discounts and cost savings for the city. So in conclusion, did Aetna provide information in response to specific requests, which it, upon request, rushed into a single document labeled as proposal three hours before meeting? Yes, we did, because we know that our plan is better than any of the alternatives. But does that mean that the city issued RFP, or Gallagher issued an RFP? No, it does not. Had an RFP been issued, we would have received it by now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ma'am, would you stay at the podium? You're in-house counsel for Aetna?
No, I'm outside counsel for Aetna.
Which firm do you practice with?
Taggart-Borden.
You're authorized to speak for Aetna this afternoon?
Yeah, I was authorized to give this statement.
Will you authorize the city to release the document that Mr. Whitehorn referenced in our administrative conference yesterday?
I cannot speak to that, I'm not authorized.
You're not authorized to allow the city to release that document?
That's correct. I'm not authorized to allow that.
Well, that's disappointing. Aetna is here complaining about a lack of fairness and transparency and is refusing to release the very document that is a subject of your remarks.
That's a confidential proprietary document. I'm not authorized to release that, but what I have shown people is that it's dated April 2022, unlike what the mayor stated was July 15th.
I thought you just told us it was a form document that you prepared in three hours. Is it now a confidential proprietary document?
All of that is confidential proprietary information.
Counsel, let me add-
I did not prepare that document, and I am not authorized to speak as to that document. I can only tell you that the date on it is April 2022.
Counsel, let me add a bit of information to this for the audience as well. This is what was presented, and this is a public document. This is what was presented in April by Aetna. Public document, I'll be, we can make copies and pass it around. This is, and we have the email. This is an email from Gallagher showing the request for proposal in July that says, "Aetna supplied the attached on July 15th, 2022. Gallagher uses information for his presentation at the board meeting that occurred later the same month per your email below. I trust you have what you need, and there will be no further document requests routed." This is from Gallagher. This is the July document. Once again, she just conflated two different documents, April presentation, July document. July, it says, "Aetna proposal presented to city of Shreveport."
That document says April 2022. The document he held in his 11th is April 2022 voting.
Councilman Nicholson still has the floor, and then I'll come to you.
Have you reviewed the actions of the Healthcare Trust Fund Board taken last week?
I was present at that meeting in the audience.
Do you understand and agree that the Medicare Advantage plan is optional as presented by that board to the city council?
I'm not here to speak on that.
You attended the meeting, and you're a healthcare lawyer. Can you answer that question for me? Can you confirm for me?
I believe the board voted that it was optional.
Optional, not mandatory.
That is my understanding.
Look, I will say this.
That's not what I'm here to talk about.
I make my, I make my living as a lawyer, and so I always respect that advocates have to carry water for their clients.
Have you finished with that?
I'm-
May you may have a seat.
Thank you.
I respect that the way lawyers make a living is carrying water for their clients and representing their clients' interests. So I, no hard feelings or disrespect to the lady who just got up here in front of us, but what is really going on here, okay, is that we have a healthcare system that has been dominant in this community for decades, for good reason, because they provided excellent, excellent healthcare. But as part of that dominance, they have been able to command very significant and often higher reimbursement rates than other healthcare providers, okay? At this point, all we are talking about at this meeting is an optional Medicare Advantage plan. The full-court press was put on to defeat the three-tier plan for actives. That's gone by the wayside. That's not happening. What we are now getting, the full-court press on still, is an optional Medicare Advantage plan. Without a doubt, it is in the interest of healthcare providers to make more money rather than less money, to get higher reimbursements rather than lower reimbursements. But our job as the governing authority of this city is to negotiate with the healthcare providers and the third-party administrators that provide and manage the healthcare our active employees and our retirees receive. That's our job. We cannot say to Willis Knighten or Ochsner or Christus or any other healthcare system, we will pay you whatever we want, because if you do that, you get hosed, and if you're a municipality, that means the taxpayers are hosed. So at this point, we are talking about a very modest, fiscally prudent step, providing an optional Medicare Advantage plan. There is no reason, no rational reason, other than just protecting the bottom line for any entity, third-party entity or healthcare provider to oppose that, okay? If you want to caution us to educate our retirees before they select an- If you want to caution us to educate our retirees before they select an advantage plan, that is totally appropriate. And I am, I am with the mayor 100% that every retiree who has that as an option needs to carefully consider the consequences of electing an advantage plan rather than a PPO plan. But don't scare people. Don't tell people that they're going to lose their doctors. Don't tell people that the city is trying to pull a fast one over on them. Mr. Whitehorn and the mayor and I and other council members have been talking about this for years. You know, Councilman Bogans sits on the Healthcare Trust on Board. I sit on the retirement board. We have overwhelming, overwhelming benefit costs that have not historically been appropriately managed. It is part of our duty and our oath to the public to manage those costs in a way that is both fair to employees and fair to taxpayers. That's what we're trying to do here. And so I just, again, let's, let's talk about the facts. Let's talk about what's actually happening. Let's move away from the suggestion that anyone up here is trying to do anything underhanded because that's not what's happening. We've got a bunch of people who work hard every day, acting in good faith, trying to do the right thing for the people of this city and for the employees who give us their time and their effort and energy every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question just goes straight back in, to the RFP. And Councilman, I agree with everything that you said, except that if, and my question was going to be, actually, the document that you have, Chief, we talked about it yesterday, is there a date on that document? I know it's proprietary, and it's very disappointing to me that Aetna won't release it where I can see it with my own eyes, but you can tell me if there's a date other than that January date.
There are several dates on the document. You're correct. The date at the bottom of each page shows April 2022. And the reason for that, I don't want to speak for Aetna, just like the lady said she couldn't speak for Aetna. But on April 22nd, 2022, at 8:16 a.m., Gallagher submitted an email to Mr. Brown and myself, along with other members of their team. "Good morning. To follow up on the Healthcare Trust Fund Board meeting, I wanted to confirm the following. It is your direction that a formal medical carrier TPA RFP be released for the effective date of 1/1/23. The effective date on this document is January 1, 2023. That request was made in April 2022. If you notice, it just says April 2022. It does not give a date. This document that was presented to us on April 20th has April 20, 2022."
I guess, thank you, Chief. And I guess the question goes back to Councilman Nicholson. I agree. But if, if we don't have Willis Knighton's true estimate, if the census wasn't given, which is being said, and I don't know if that's a scare tactic, whatever you want to call it, if that's what's being said, that they didn't, we're at square one when it comes to the tiers. But this does play into the healthcare advantage plan. If they did not have the opportunity to give their true bid on this because they didn't have the census data, which has been alleged, then are we really being good stewards of the taxpayers' money? Because we're back to square one on this. So I think another councilman up here at the last meeting said, "Do we have an opportunity for, for both to present again?" I don't know. But I think that in good faith for the employees, good faith for the citizens, that the largest healthcare provider in the city should have been given an opportunity to bid, and they're saying they didn't. And to me, it looks like a mess. I mean, we can't see documents. I don't, I don't know. And I'm not saying it didn't happen or it did. I can tell you this, honestly, and I've said this to people all along, I don't think in any way it's the administration's fault. I told Chief Whitehorn that on the phone the other day. I don't think that this is y'all's fault, and it shouldn't be on your backs. I think that there was a drop somewhere. I don't know, Chairman Green and I talked about this. Maybe it was Gallagher. They were so disrespectful to the, to the chairman, they wouldn't even come speak to us last time. So I'm just trying to figure out if we're getting the best bang for the buck. And, and I'm not convinced of that. It looks like everybody else up here is. So, but I'm, I'm not convinced that we're getting the best bang for the buck and that the city is getting the best thing for the taxpayers and for the citizens. But again, I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm not trying to put blame on the administration. This is not political for me. I think if you've followed me over the last four years, if I have a question, I'm going to ask you, and everybody's going to know about it. So I just wish that we could see that document where we could see those dates.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Speaking about the census data, again, this is dated May 12th, 2022, 8:01 a.m. This is another email from Gallagher. "Importance high. Good morning. We received the census data yesterday."
That's from Gallagher, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
"We received the census data yesterday and will combine for RFP distribution, just following up on the questions below to complete the RFP prior to sending to market. They got the census data in May. That information was sent out to the carriers. So I don't know who's telling you they didn't get the census data or that we did not provide the census data."
Mr. Chairman?
Just to, just to clear the air, so that everybody will know, maybe we'll be on equal footing. I got a call this morning from Attorney Ron Machota. He asked me if I would call the mayor and Mr. Whitehorn to see if Willis Knighton could have a meeting with them to discuss a plan that would save money, that would be a win-win for everybody. I said to him that I would. I hung up from Ron. I called Mr. Whitehorn. He agreed to meet sometime next week. I asked them if they would make the meeting this week and have the meeting, make the appointment this week and have the meeting next week. Mr. Whitehorn agreed. I talked to the mayor. I said to him what Mr. Ron Machota had said to me. The mayor gladly accepted, Mr. Whitehorn gladly accepted. I said to Attorney Ron Machota that, I called him back to let him know that all he needed to do was call the administration, Mr. Whitehorn and the mayor, and they have agreed to have the meeting next week to see whatever proposal Willis Knighton wanted to do. I'm putting that on the record that I talked to Mr. Ron Machota. And I don't know if he has called you all to set the appointment yet, but that's the work that is being done behind the scene. If I didn't tell you all, you all wouldn't know. But that's what happened today. Mr. Ron Machota called me maybe before 8:00 this morning to get that meeting set. Everybody agreed. They wanted to meet with me today. I said to him that I could not because I had a pinched nerve and I was unable to meet the meeting because of excruciating pain. So, so that you'll know that even while people are still talking about the whatever, there are some things that's been happening. I said to Attorney Ron Machota, always know, and he agreed, that cases are not won in the courtroom, that they're won in the judge's chamber. And that's where we are right now, working out things in the chamber. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Bogans.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm, sorry, Ms. Jax.
For those who have issues with the Medicare Advantage Plan, keep in mind, both companies submitted a Medicare Advantage Plan. Aetna's plan came in $80,000 less than Blue Cross Blue Shield's plan. I say that to say that in a matter of three hours, as the lady said, they were able to put some numbers together that were the best plan. However, the entire proposal was still $1.6 million higher than Blue Cross Blue Shield. But both companies submitted a Medicare Advantage Plan. And the Medicare Advantage Plan that's been proposed for retirees is still an option. So whether it's Medicare Advantage is good or bad for the retirees is relative to that retiree, and it's still an option. But the plan itself was submitted by both companies, Aetna and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons it would be so helpful for Aetna to authorize disclosure of this document we're talking about is that the public could evaluate that document and could look, for example, for any qualifications. You know, did, did Aetna submit this proposal and, and include in the document a statement to the effect of, "We don't have all the information? This is not our best plan"? Or did it not? I don't know, because, because we can't review it publicly. And, and you know, there's, there's just no reason, there's no reason that Aetna can't make that document public. Sunshine would really help this process, and if that's what you expect from the City of Shreveport, then you, as a third-party administrator, should be willing to swallow the same pill. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Green's 100% right. I don't want anybody to think that the seven members that are sitting up here are disengaged about this or that there's not something going on. We're all making phone calls and conversate, and having conversations about this, and this is not a council against administration or council member against council member. We're just trying to do the right thing. And I agree with you, Councilman Nicholson. Sunshine from Aetna would, would help this out tremendously. Because I've said this over and over again, if I know it, I feel like that the public needs to know it. And all I want, this is not about the hospitals, to me. It's, it's not about who has the best hospital or who's going to get the business. It's about the process being fair and that we're making sure that everybody can come to the table. And that's all I care about in this. That's it. And I don't care who did what. I just want to make sure that we are doing the fair and right thing and that the taxpayers and the citizens and the employees and the retirees are getting the best that they can get, and we're getting the best bang for the buck. That's, that's all I care about. So whatever light comes out in this and whoever's right and whoever's wrong, at the end of the day, if I know it, you need to know it. And so, but I, I did want to say that I agree with Chairman. There is a lot of conversations amongst ourselves going on about this with the administration. I spent 30 minutes on the phone with Chief Whitehorn on Friday. I don't feel like that this is some kind of big cover-up. I think that it is a mistake, and I'm not quite sure that the people that, that made the mistake are even still in the game, which is kind of sad to me, and now we're having to clean it up. So anyway, that's just my two cents worth, but thank you, Chairman, for your comments.
Yes. Mr. Bogans?
Jeff Fielder. Hello, Jeff Fielder, President and CEO for Willis Knighton. And I'd first like to say I appreciate how engaged all of you are in this process. I think that we really need that, and we really need your oversight in this situation. And Councilman Green is, is correct in what he's saying, that we have made overtures to administration or we're going to, to call them to negotiate to get back into this plan. So thank you very much for bringing that up, Councilman Green. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
At the Healthcare Trust Fund Board meeting last week, one of the common themes from individuals that spoke at that board meeting was that they wanted their health insurance options to equal access to each one of the hospitals, local hospitals here in Shreveport. Willis Knighton wants to continue to ensure that city employees and retirees who want to be cared for by Willis Knighton doctors and hospitals can do so without financial penalties or disincentives. Over the years, the majority of employees and retirees have sought healthcare from Willis Knighton, and we appreciate them for doing that. We recognize that healthcare options are important, and we understand that retirees traditionally require more healthcare. And it was never our intention to get into a disagreement with the city that caused anxiety among employees or retirees about their health insurance options. Yesterday, I listened to the city council, more specifically, Councilwoman Green, or Councilwoman Taylor. I appreciate your comments because we too agree that it's not fair to put employees and retirees in a situation that they could potentially cause themselves to make a decision that they can't receive care from one of their doctors or go to one of their hospitals. Our goal from the beginning has been to advocate for an open, transparent process. We believe that the needs of the city and the needs of the employees and retirees can best be met with an equitable bidding process containing open and transparent communication. And I do believe that there are many of us in this room that believe that the bidding process conducted by Gallagher, the city's consultant at the time, has been anything less than transparent and equitable. Chief Whitehorn, yesterday you said that the Healthcare Trust Fund Board meeting was going to reconvene next week to go over some more options that they'd like to present to save the money. I'm here today that Willis Knighton would like to be part of those conversations, if that's possible, because we want to work with you to make sure that the city employees and retirees are getting the most cost-effective healthcare options that we can give them. Chief, you also held up that document yesterday, and I don't, I don't want to call a lot of attention to this because one, I haven't been able to see the documents y'all got. But I do have a document similar to the one you've got, and it is stamped on the inside, "April 2022." So I don't know if that's the same one, Mayor, or not. I really don't care right now. But I'm telling you that this document that I'm holding was presented at a preliminary meeting that we had with the Healthcare Trust Fund Board back in April. And then two days after that, there were emails going back and forth about whether or not there was going to be a formal RFP process issued to, issued in this matter. We were banking on it the entire time. We were banking on it. So if we were wrong, then that was miscommunication. But that's where we stand on this. Our position from the beginning is that Willis Knighton nor Aetna-
That's your time.
One second.
Your time.
Chairman?
You're welcome to ask my question.
I think that Chief Fryer gave his three minutes-
Yeah, I think I'm-
-to Willis Knighton.
I think I've got a couple extra.
Did he?
Do we have a rule that you can give time?
I don't have a clue, Chairman. I just know that he said it.
We don't have that kind of rule.
We've allowed it in the past.
We did. You can have, you go ahead and have three more minutes.
Okay, okay. You know, our position from the beginning is that neither Willis Knighton nor Aetna has received a formal request for production for the city's employee and retiree health insurance business from the city or its benefits consultants. Only, we feel that only through a legitimate formal RFP process that puts all insurers on an equal playing field with the same information can be sure that the city, and more importantly, the city's employees and retirees are getting a cost-effective, high-quality health insurance bid for the city's insurance. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So the Medicare Advantage Plan that we spoke about yesterday, that came in $80,000 cheaper.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying those were just some preliminary numbers, though weren't your actual numbers? Because if we were just judging that plan itself, Willis Knighton wins. That plan is better if we're just looking at that particular plan?
I'll put it to you this way. Even a, even a blind man that plays darts can hit the dartboard every once in a while. And that's, that's what happened with that Medicare Advantage Plan. We were lucky enough to come in right below our competition, didn't get the bid. I understand the reason why, because the other number was skewed. But our position from the beginning has been, we didn't have all the numbers to make an accurate presentation at the time we did.
The other thing that has not been said too, Blue Cross Blue Shield could claim the same thing. They didn't receive a formal process. They just got an email, and they submitted some numbers. I don't know which company took more time, took more thought, and actually submitted their best proposal. But that's extremely important to me because when we talk about the word "formal," that's relative to whatever entity. Gallagher's formal process could simply be an email request. The City of Shreveport's formal process is completely different than Gallagher's process. So when we talk about the word "formal," that word keeps coming up. We got to be clear as to which entity and which we're talking about. If you had equal opportunity to respond to an email, just like Blue Cross Blue Shield, and one company took more effort and time into submitting the information than another company, then you need to be held responsible for that, or Aetna needs to be held responsible. I, I can't speak to that because, again, we don't, we don't have all of the information. I will say this, that you can't have it both ways. If your Medicare Advantage Plan was a great plan and you stand by that plan, because you, you mentioned it yesterday, on record- you mentioned it yesterday on record, saying, "Hey, why not choose our plan? Our plan was better," and now you're saying that you was shooting in the dark blind, it was an accident, so I need some consistency.
Well, I'll tell you, the consistency comes through an RFP process. All of the insurers get all of the information at the same time. It's requested, the targets are told to them, the premiums, everything upfront, so that they can give a competitive bid. I don't know when Blue Cross got their stuff. I don't know when half the time Aetna got stuff, because they were getting emails for, like, three months back and forth with Gallagher requesting things. So that's not an RFP process. That's harem and scareum, if you ask me, and there's no way for you to say that that's a consistent way of, especially when you're talking about a $40 million plan like this. There needs to be some consistency and some formality to it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chief Whitehorn.
Yes, Madam.
My question then becomes, because the RFP is the proposal that is mentioned, because it is said that the city did not issue an RFP, Gallagher's RFP process was not clear. Please, clear for me, that the city did not issue an RFP for health insurance. Is that correct?
We issued an RFP for the consultant. That was a formal RFP process. The consultants then shop for our insurance and bring us the best product. They issued the RFP to Aetna and to Blue Cross, similar to our current consultant, HUD. At the last board meeting, they brought us different pricing based on their RFP process for ancillary products. They sent out RFPs to MetLife, Mutual of Omaha, Trustmark. I can't remember all of them. Standard, they did their RFP process. I asked Ms. Grady Morrison, I said, "How did, what is that RFP process like?" She said, "We sent them an email." That's the same process that Gallagher used, unfortunately, or fortunately, depends on who's looking at it. But they brought us data based on an email RFP that they sent out. That's how it's done. I don't know no other way to explain it.
Mr. Felder, at any point in time, and it would not be you, it would be your representative, Aetna, if they believe that they did not receive all of the documentation, is there documentation where they reached out to Gallagher to say, "We didn't receive this information" because you knew that there was an RFP process that was taking place?
There were emails, Councilwoman, that went back and forth between Aetna and Gallagher requesting information.
Okay.
So I know that they didn't get it all at one time.
So did at any point in that email that Aetna say, "We don't have the information for the RFP to submit on behalf to the city of Shreveport?"
And I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I know that there are emails wanting to know when the RFP is coming, and those were the, that was the information that we were banking on.
So at that point, that if you believe that those emails are there, did the Aetna representative say to you that, you know, "We need to reach out to the city or whomever because Gallagher has not submitted or not provided us the RFP information that we need to submit our proposals, since we know how urgent this is?"
I was not involved, and I'll tell you this, I was not involved in the day-to-day process of this bidding process. I do know that I have viewed emails between Gallagher and Aetna requesting different pieces of information, people being on vacation, "We'll get it to you when they return," that kind of thing. It wasn't anything in a document that says, "Here, go bid on this insurance plan." That was not given to Willis Knighton. Nor Aetna for that matter.
I understand, again, everyone's formal RFP process is quite different, but what I need to know, because what is alleged is that something was not received, and so at that particular point, I need to know for clarification, did the Aetna representative reach out to Gallagher? Was Gallagher not responsive in going in and not providing that particular information to Aetna, so they could properly submit the information that was needed for the RFP?
And I'm sorry that I can't answer your question, but all I can tell you is, is that through a formal RFP process, things like that don't happen, because everybody gets the same thing upfront, and then that allows them to make a competitive bid.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That if they, if Aetna believed that they did not receive the formal RFP, what was Aetna's next steps?
To ask for it again, which they did.
Did they reach out to Gallagher again? Or did they contact the city to say, "Listen, your consultant is not sending this paperwork over, and we need it," blah, blah, blah? That is something that I would like to-
Not aware of them contacting the city, but I am aware that they did try to reach out to Gallagher to get that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Felder, quick question. Can you speak with Aetna and ask them to disclose their emails? Because we're under public records requests, we'll happily disclose all of our emails that we got.
Actually, I think Jennifer's back there right now emailing some attorneys to see if she can do that.
Okay, good.
I can't do anything about that, obviously, because I'm not an Aetna representative, but if we can release it, I'm sure they will.
Good. I think, yeah, that'll be great. That'll give the public the full picture of what happened.
And may I ask, what day was the RFP supposed to be submitted to Gallagher? What was the timeline?
That's a good question. The RFP would have come from Gallagher.
Okay.
So-
So what day was Aetna-
Well, this document was given out in the preliminary meeting that Aetna had with the Healthcare Trust Fund Board. Two days after this document was given in the Healthcare Trust Fund Board, they were still talking about submitting an RFP and whether or not one was going to be submitted. And I believe I saw an email from Mr. Brown saying, "Confirm they are going to submit an RFP." But that was two days after this document was delivered to the Healthcare Trust Fund Board. So everything in here is not complete.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The only document presented to the Healthcare Trust Fund Board was this document that I'm holding in my hand.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Crawford. Thank you. All right. Oh, Philip Rosman.
Doctor.
Doctor Rosman.
Philip Rosman, cardiologist here for the last 37 years. I put away what I was coming to talk to you about. I've got to tell you that I thought I was confused before. I'm a little more confused now. I'll just, as points, is what I've heard is, I'm not so sure that, it sounds like the consultant maybe could have done better work in this. And the second thing, from my experience, you know, I think we're in the midst, this is the midst of the battle of the titans of huge insurance companies and health systems, and it's part of that ongoing battle between insurance companies and health systems. I've been here a long time. I've dealt with insurance companies for a long time. I'm really here to ask, really basically, what Mr. Butcher asked for. We're looking for a process that's fair, all at the table, and a level playing field. And if we can just put those three things together, I assume that we're kind of starting over and kind of doing what we need to do from here, but then we'll have a really good, you know, I think we'll have learned something from all of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheriff Buffen. All right, that concludes our speaking for the time.
Thank you. At this particular time, we have an executive appointment, Kyle Sollhart, to the Downtown Development Authority to be considered today. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Thank you. There are no consent agenda legislation to be introduced today. Ms. White, will you proceed with the regular agenda legislation, please?
Yes. Resolution 110, authorizing the marshal of the City Court of Shreveport to receive, in addition to salary paid to him, the city of Shreveport, the same fees as are payable to constables of Justice of Peace Court, up to 50% of the salary paid by the city of Shreveport.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Jackson. To postpone. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We kind of talked about this. We're just waiting on an opinion, is that correct?
Yes, we're-
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 112, a resolution in remembrance of Devin Dewayne Myers and to otherwise provide respect to. There is one amendment. This amendment clarifies the source of funds for Devin Myers' opportunity scholarship.
So move on the amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jackson on the amendment, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Motion on the ordinance as amended by the chair, seconded by Councilman Jackson. Are there any questions or comments? Now, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 114, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Symphony Orchestra.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? Now, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 115, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Opera.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 116, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Metropolitan Ballet.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 117, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo relative to the city of Shreveport's guaranteed income program.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? Now, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven. I'm sorry, with five. Motion carries with five, two against.
Resolution 118, amending the pay plan for classified employees to address pay compressions.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 119, authorizing the mayor to submit loan application form 100A and accompanying documents for water tank rehabilitation to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 120, authorizing the mayor to submit loan application form 100A and accompanying documents for lead joint water lines to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 121, authorizing the mayor to submit loan application form 100A and accompanying documents for Amos WTP transmission piping to the Department of Health on behalf of the city of Shreveport for the purpose of placing this project on the comprehensive priority list for funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 122, endorsing the Shreveport Crisis Response Coalition goal statement.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 123, disapproving the proposed changes to the city of Shreveport's health benefit plan and healthcare programs approved by the Healthcare Trust Fund Board of Trustees at its September 7, 2022, meeting.
Moved to withdraw.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Butcher to withdraw.
Discussion.
Are there any questions or comments?
Discussion.
At this time, Mr. Butcher.
After hearing everything we heard yesterday, you know, my ultimate for this with the supplement would be for both to be able to, you know, the Aetna and the Blue Cross to be presented. I think that it causes too much trouble with where we are right now, not to go with the one that the Healthcare Trust Board has voted on and approved. You know, and I just want to make it clear to retirees that this is not something that you have to do. So, you know, I think last year there was a possibility that you would have to do it. So, you know, I would just suggest speaking with your doctor and making sure that if you do do this, you know that there may be some limitations. So, but I think that just withdrawing this legislation and let's see what the Healthcare Trust Board does with the tier plan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam.
A few suggestions. In the discussions that we've had for the last two days regarding health insurance, and I appreciate, Mr. Felder, that you've come in and acknowledging, again, that employees and retirees, healthcare is a priority, their relationships with their doctors is an extension of their families, and that we must make sure that that is the priority. It is my hope that we will come together for a workable outcome that is going to be what's best for who this is going to affect, which are the employees and the retirees. Retirees are on a fixed income. What I don't like is the fear mongering, and I think that education is vitally important when it comes to this. So I'm going to ask, at this time, that we make sure that we have planned, scheduled meetings for the consultants that we hire to educate our employees as well as our retirees, so they will not have room for doubt when it comes to their health coverage. When you're a caretaker for your parents or you're a caretaker for your parents, that is, or your child, that is a priority and a major concern for you. So what I'm going to ask for both parties, for both, well, all three of our healthcare systems, is that we make sure that we keep the employees and the retirees the priority. Put aside the differences, and let's take a look at what is really happening here and how this is going to affect us. I will agree with Ms. Sellers on what she said yesterday. I think that it is very formidable to have representatives from each department to sit in on these meetings, so they can articulate what is said in these meetings, so they would have a general understanding of what is here because- have a general understanding of what is here because some things more, some information is more received when it is articulated from your peers. And you have that information and it is somebody with light personalities. We don't understand the acronyms of when they come and it's like, what is RFP and what is PPO and that has to, there has to be an educational summit when it comes to providing health insurance information to everyone that's involved. You know the language. They may not understand the language, but for us, as the city, for us, you know, for in, for our employees and for our retirees, please know and understand that you are the priority. As, as Chairman Green said on yesterday, we didn't pass this cost on to our employees or, or retirees for the last three years. And this council has been very adamant to make sure that you get the best quality care that you can. So, it is my ask strongly that we sit down at this table, look at it as what we can do. Remember what Ms. Jill said about her family member as we listen to our employees because the cost is going to be what's important? Can I take care of my family? And am I going to change, have to change my doctor? Answer those questions for them. And when you think about that, you think about the relationship that you have with your own doctor. The doc, that relationship is important. It is very, very important. So, all of the big to-dos, come down and think about those individuals that you will face with that may not have the same type of income that many others have and how that's going to affect them.
Chair.
Yes, madam.
Thank you, Chair. Um, it's a, the, what is it? In all that getting, it's getting understanding. It's incumbent on us as a body to understand all of the facets of this, even if we, even if you all do not, because we are your first line of defense as the public when it comes to these things. And I think that all of us understand, I hope, that the employees and retirees are what this is really about and the taxpayers and that moving forward, this isn't going to be the end of it. Next year, there's going to be a belt tightening, no matter who's sitting in these suits up here, that this is an issue that is just the reality of this city when it comes to our funding for, for healthcare. The premiums will be going up even if the, if the copays are not. That's a piece of this that we haven't been discussing, and we are going to have to go back to the table and look at these tiers or whatever else is going to be presented before the end of this year, before open enrollment. What I hope that we've all learned from this, that it's not just incumbent on us to understand it, but that we expect a fair, inconsistent, and transparent process. Because a lot of the reason that people are afraid, Councilman Nicholson, isn't just a fear mongering, it's our inconsistency year after year, every time we get to this point and people find out that their premiums might go back up. And that's when we end up having to pull trigger on us spending money out of the general fund to maintain the status quo. That's where we were last year. So, after what happened last year, that trigger, people are hurting and people are worried that they're going to be back at that drawing board. And there have been issues with healthcare and other administrations before this. They know it better than we do because a lot of them have been probably retired longer than they worked and suffering from the time that they did work for us. So, I think that it's important that we recognize that it's not just about fear mongering. We don't have to cast any more aspersions than have been cast. It's a matter of what's best for our constituents, best for the employees and the retirees.
Excuse me, Ms. Taylor, hold it just a minute. We asked that you not talk while the meeting is going on. We've already passed.
Oh, man, I'm so close.
All right. We've already passed public speaking, so we asked that if you can just hold your comments until after the meeting. Okay. I don't need your hand, just don't have your voice. You may continue.
I go first, Donald.
You want to start back over?
Can we roll back the tape? Basically, we don't have to cast any more aspersions that are already there. We just remember what our role is in this and to make sure that we keep the consistency and the respect so that we can take care of the people that we're here to take care of. That's it. Thank you.
That reminded me of a football game when the referee calls right about, about time to a touchdown.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the spirited public discussion we've had over the past several weeks, I'd like to reiterate my, uh, deep appreciation and respect for Jeff Fielder and the entire Williston team, Steve Randall, who's also present, although he's kept his silence, and the entire LSU offing team. We are incredibly fortunate in Shreveport to have a top-notch, multi-provider healthcare system that people come from hundreds of miles around, uh, uh, to benefit from. I don't, uh, the, the Williston folks can say it better than I, but we have some proton machine that treats cancer, uh, and we only have one of a handful in the whole country. So, uh, we are, uh, we are so very fortunate to benefit from the, the dedication and hard work and lifetime of service from the executive teams at these hospitals, uh, down to the, the most junior person that they employ. Uh, and I hope that no one who has participated in this process will mistake any of the hard questions or my remarks, uh, as, as disrespect because that certainly was not intended. And I am, again, very grateful for everything that you, uh, both of you, all of you have done for my family and for this community. So, thank you both, gentlemen.
That's enough. Let's vote.
Thank you.
We have no items, uh, to be introduced for introduction of resolutions. Ms. White, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two?
Ordinance one thirty, amending the twenty twenty-two Community Development Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one thirty-one, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance one thirty-two, declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair at the Sludge Farm located at one one seven two six Harts Island Road. Ordinance one thirty-three, declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency purchase of liquid chlor- chlorine for use in the drinking water treatment process at the Amos Water Treatment Plant. Ordinance one thirty-four, closing and abandoning a twenty-foot wide alley dedication in the Sanford Place Addition in section twelve, T seventeen north, range fourteen west. Ordinance one thirty-five, changing the name of Red Fox Circle in the Moore, Moore's Girls Circle Subdivision in section twenty-five, T seventeen north, range fifteen west, to God's Country. Ordinance one thirty-six, to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating the use, that, definitions, use standards, and parking requirements, respectively pertaining to the retail sales of alcohol. Ordinance one thirty-seven, to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to surfacing requirements for parking lots.
There are motions to introduce these ordinance, moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilwoman Nicholson. These ordinance have been introduced. Ms. White, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance one oh eight, to revise chapter seventy, seventy-eight, article five, standards for construction of parking lots of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinance, relative to construction of parking lots. And this is to be postponed.
Motion to postpone.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Taylor, that we postpone. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote to postpone.
Ordinance one oh nine, to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating and revising the regulations for political signs and to provide respect. It was previously postponed on August ninth and until December thirteenth.
Yes. Motion postponed by the chair, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
I don't think we need to.
Postpone.
You don't have to.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Ordinance one thirteen, to amend section ten dash four of the Code of Ordinance relative to reports by the chief of police and to, and to include language concerning the powers of the chief of police to make rules and regulations.
Some move on the amendment.
Second.
Moved on the amendment by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll just, uh, express my appreciation to the administration for amending this legislation to address a concern I raised. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Some move on, motion as amended.
So, moved on the ordinance as amended, second moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-two, amending the twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
I'm moved to adopt without the amendment and request discussion.
Second.
Uh, moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Taylor. At this time, we'll have discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've discussed, uh, the amendment to this legislation into one twenty-three with Mr. LaTeire and with the mayor, and they agreed that ordinance one twenty-two and one twenty-three should be adopted without the amendments. The subject matter of the amendments will be reintroduced at the next meeting of the separate legislation.
So, do we vote on just say removing the amendment or do we vote on amendment to fail? How you go about doing that?
I think we just ignore it.
Just, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
What's the exact motion?
Uh, the motion to adopt ordinance one twenty-two without the amendment.
A second with me.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-three, amending the twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget.
Motion to adopt without the amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Taylor to adopt the, uh, ordinance without the amendment. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-four, amending the twenty twenty-two Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Some move. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with five. Two again.
Ordinance one twenty-five, to amend section thirty-eight dash, thirty-eight, five dash three of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinance, relative to procedure for the appointment of hearing officers to the city's environmental court.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-six, zoning case number twenty-two dash one forty-one dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Code, Development Code by rezoning property located north side of Bert Coombs Industrial Loop, approximately one thousand and seven hundred feet east of Kingston Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C dash two corridor, commercial zone, commercial zoning to C dash three, general commercial zoning district.
Moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-seven, zoning case number twenty-two dash one forty-four dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located west side of Sanford Avenue between Jennings Street and Woodrow Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R dash two, multifamily residential zoning district to IC Instructional Campus Zoning District.
Some move.
Moved by Councilwoman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll just reiterate that when you see that IC zoning, that's not industrial, it's instructional campus for the hospital, and we're not making something where a factory could go in later. Thank you.
Jackson. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-eight, zoning case number twenty-two dash one forty-five dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located east side of Wallace Lake Road, approximately one hundred feet south of Toop Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R dash one dash seven, single-family residential district to C dash one neighborhood commercial zoning district.
Some move. Moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman, uh, Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one twenty-nine, zoning case number twenty-two dash one forty-seven dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located west side of Southern Avenue, approximately one hundred and thirty feet south of Hartley Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C dash two corridor, commercial zoning district to C dash two corridor, commercial zoning pud district.
Some move.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say, I lived in, uh, I lived in the salt area long enough as a child to know how bad a chicken coop smells. And this, uh, this legislation is going to allow a chicken coop, so I, I'm okay with it if Councilwoman Fuller is, but, uh.
It's going to be a very fancy chicken coop.
Fancy chicken coop.
And keep in mind that in this city, you are allowed to have X number of chickens, as long as they're hens and not roosters in the city limits.
They're going to clean it?
They're going to clean it. They've got a really cute little compound that they're doing right there. And the reason we're doing it is a planned unit development, is they actually live there, but it's a mostly industrial area on that side of Southern. They'll be okay.
I'm, I'm satisfied.
If the Great, if Great Raft is okay, they'll be all right.
Are there no other questions? Let's vote.
It's a no smell.
You know that one of the main reasons people actually shut up for Unified Development Code, like, uh, community meetings, was that some of the little South Highlands ladies wanted chickens. That was the only thing they were fighting for.
So, you want us to vote yes?
Please just vote yes. Let them have their chicken coop.
Thank you.
Don't put none in my district. Motion carries with seven.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today? Thank you. We have no property standards, MPC, ZVA, uh, AVO appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk? Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
[inaudible] From the mayor's office on September ninth, twenty twenty-two, and it's subject for confirmation on September twenty-sixth. And as for the [inaudible] police service board, Dr. Wilford, [inaudible].
All right. Counselor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um, Ms. I'm sorry. Ms. Alderman had a copy of the goals and would like for all of us to sign it. Just went as appropriate. I don't know if we need to do it now. She can just hold it after the meeting. I just wanted to make that announcement so we can all sign that when we're done.
Madam, Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I want to invite Chief Wayne Smith up to talk about the parade a little bit. I think I kind of butchered his announcement for the parade. So, I want the illustrious police chief to come up and talk to us about the good stuff going on.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor, for bringing to the attention of not only the council, but our watching and listening audience about this coming Thursday, September fifteenth. As you well know, we're making the biggest push ever to encourage our community to unite on National Night Out. We are competing against the country for the first time ever for the greatest participation in National Night Out. Now, National Night Out is a program that encourages neighborhoods to unite, for people to come out in the streets. We block off the streets, have a National Night Out party, which is a picnic, and get to know your neighbors. Well, we're taking it many, many steps further. It's our intent this year to get twice as many registered and participating as we did last year, and we're headed in that direction. We're in the home stretch and we need everyone's participation to help us reach our goal of three hundred registered. We have already registered nationally with the two hundred that we have and the participants, and we are already crossing big hurdles. Thursday evening is our kickoff National Night Out Parade, sponsored by the Police Department. And the intent of that is to give drugs and crime a going away party. It's going to happen here in the four, the six hundred, to the six hundred block of Texas Street this Thursday afternoon, starting at six o'clock. And it serves two purposes. One, to raise awareness and to encourage people to participate in National Night Out, how important it is for Shreveport to give drugs and crime a going away. But in addition to that, it's going to be filmed. It's one of the film clips that we're going to share with the rest of the country to show the country how excited and how enthused, how people feel about the city of Shreveport. It's our major campaign ad that's going to go out across the country that hopefully will help us win the big trophy. So, all of you, community, please come out and support it. We want when other cities, other countries see this film clip, that they see the wonderful community that Shreveport is and the potential that it has to be because our people love Shreveport. We're one big team, Team Shreveport. That's the direction we're going. So, come out and help us, please.
Do we have a float?
There's supposed to be a float or two that's going to be entered by, I think, the parades that do it in Montegro, some of the crews. I'll be in a car from someone downtown.
We have a float.
Am I going to have to walk?
I will provide you a ride. If you'll come, I'll zip you.
I want to sit up and, I want to sit with you.
So, in other words, we don't have a float.
Y'all have any, y'all have any convertible police cars?
You don't ride a Councilman Bowman's car.
To the country. And you know, we've talked about that building a float for the city of Shreveport. We really have.
Take all the cops out.
So, thank all of you.
Chair.
Thank you, Chief.
Chair.
Yes.
I do want to acknowledge that we did get a report that said crime is down, so we definitely want to commend you for those efforts I think that reserves around us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. And as I say throughout the week, it is not just the effort of the Police Department alone. It is Team Shreveport, the entire community, the entire community of law enforcement agencies, of citizens, of private group, of homeowners association, of social services organization. It is all of us gelling together to make a difference. And we should always remember that everybody's efforts are welcome. None is too small or too large. Every little bit of spice that goes into the gumbo makes a good product. So, thank all of you for that.
Chief, you're taking us from Waffle House to the gumbo now.
Oh, Waffle House, okay.
No, you're taking us from literally when you worked at Denny's to now talking about the gumbo.
I've grown. I still eat Denny's.
I was about to say, my police chief can fight crime and he can eat. I promise you that.
After all, my specialty.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I don't, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Does any council member have any additional communication?
We got the woke.
Executive session, none. Y'all look so lovely today.
Oh, great, because Ms. Alderman wants us to take a picture. Ms. Alderman wants us to take a picture.
Okay. If nothing else to come before this, I didn't, this video, because it's Joe.